I'd like to open the public meeting. A moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. If you all councilors will think of our neighbors, North Andover, North Andover, Lawrence, Tewksbury. Keep it in your thoughts. Thank you. You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? So vote. Thank you. We'll move to hearings four A. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice here by giving that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 13, 2018. At 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wiggins Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowes Street, PBD Mass, on petition 18-155 filed by the PBD Municipal Light Plant 201 Warren Street Extension, PBD Mass, requesting to locate one new pole at the end of the cul-de-sac on Pinewood Road, PBD Mass, PBD City Council, Council Edward R. Charis, City Council President.
Petitioner, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record and what you're looking for.
Hi, my name is Will Cardello, and I'm here representing PBD Municipal Light Plant. We were approached by the counselor to set a new pole at the end of the cul-de-sac on Pinewood Road for means of a streetlight. So we're looking for approval of the council.
Counselor O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we had a resident had some issues, a couple of issues of vandalism up on Pinewood Road, and I took a ride up there at night, and it's the end of a cul-de-sac, and there's no light at all. So it seemed to make sense to have some sort of light for not only pedestrians and car traffic, vehicle traffic, but hopefully cut down on any kind of bad behavior from teenagers or whatnot. So Counselor Gould and I made a co-motion to ask the PMLP to look at installing a streetlight. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this? Any opposing? Anyone who in favor or opposing, ma'am? Ma'am, are you looking to speak? And would you like to speak? Ma'am, if you can just state your name and address for the record, and there's a little button right there on the speaker, you can, on the base, push it and go.
Hi, my name is Karen Camerata, and I live on 23 Pinewood Road. For the past several years, I've had a lot of vandalism. The property abuts the woods and its conservation land, and the kids hide in there, and they love to throw rocks, they love to egg the house, they love to break windows, and it's so dark. I just need some help. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor O'Neill?
Nothing further.
You all set with this? You in favor of?
Yep.
Motion closed.
Do you, Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? So vote. Motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the PMLP locate a new pole at the end of the cul-de-sac on Pinewood Road. So moved.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on, not on this particular issue, but in regards to PMLP and helping out with light issues, is it, I made a motion a couple of months ago to have a streetlight attached to a pole at a particular address, and I didn't know that the procedure would be to, is it a special permit required to add a pole? Glenn, I don't know if that's something, add a light, rather. Is that something you could address for one second, please? I don't want to take away from what's going on here, but...
No, if you want to clarify, make it simple.
I just want to clarify the process.
Yeah, no, that's good timing. Thank you.
Glenn, in particular, I made a motion back in June 28th to have a light attached to a pole at 5 Dartmouth Road, and I haven't heard anything. But again, I don't want to take away from what we're doing here. Is it something that is, should it be a special permit process to have a light attached to a pole? I know this is a new pole.
So the way the normal, normally the way the process works is if a resident or business is looking for a new streetlight on an existing pole, they go to the ward counselor. It's brought up at City Council. The council votes on it. If it's approved, we get the motion sent down to us at the light plant, and then we discuss it with the Department of Public Works, because ultimately, they give the final approval on adding it on to the city's bill and putting it in their budget and whatnot. So generally, what happens is when we get the motion, we give it to engineering. They speak with DPW, and once, when we get the approval from them, they write up a job order, send it down to the line crews, and we have someone go out and put the light up. So this particular streetlight at 5 Dartmouth, yeah, I'm not, I don't remember that specifically, but when I go back, we can take a look, see where that stands in the process, and provide you with an update.
Do you, Mr. Chairman, sorry to take away...
No, if, I remember you making the motion. It was a cold motion, and I got to tell you, every time I've made a request, Dave, the electric light has came through relatively quick, and also DPW. I think this is one that just fell through the crack, and again, I would still follow up this week, tomorrow with them. Counselor, okay?
Counselor O'Neill, I'm sorry to take away from your...
Mr. Chairman, no, I understand. I wasn't sure of the process either, so thank you.
You have the motion on the floor. Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Mazzulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Grevell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four B, would the counselor please read the notice? Clerk?
This is a recessed hearing.
Okay, due to a recessed hearing, the clerk does not need to read the notice, but would the petitioner please come to the podium? I'm sorry, Attorney Swiniewski. I probably pronounced your name wrong. I'm sorry.
I have a...
No, if the clerk was able, had to read the notice again, you would have known. But can you just state your name and address for the record, and what you're looking to do, to refresh our memories?
Yes, my name's Chris Swiniewski. I'm an attorney for Verizon Wireless. My address is the law firm of McLean Middleton, 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire. A few other addresses as well. This matter comes before the council as a result of somewhat lengthy process. Probably three to four years ago, we filed an application for a special permit to install a wireless communications facility at 161 Lynn Street. That application was denied, and an appeal was filed in the land court. We tried to work out a settlement with the city, which involved responding to a request for proposals issued by the then-city council. We did respond. We were awarded the bid, and we spent a significant amount of time and money designing that proposal, which involved a different wireless communications facility at the municipal golf course. I don't recall the name of it, but I'm sure everybody here is familiar with it. When it came time to get the special permit required for that, special permit coming from the same city council that issued the RFP requesting proposals, the city permit was denied. So a second appeal was filed with the land court, and the cases were essentially consolidated with the land court. This all transpired within the last, about three years ago. Since then, we have been working, again, for a couple of other different settlement options. One of those options involved locating antennas on 14 poles owned by the PBD Municipal Light Plant. However, we were not able to come to even close to an agreement on price for those, so right now, that is dead. So the other alternative was a proposal of 14 poles that my client would install in the city of Peabody to achieve the same objective of those 14 PMLP poles that were identified. Seven of those poles, as I understand it from the last four of these meetings, four or five maybe, were not objectionable to this council. Seven of them were, and there were requests to make some changes, the vast majority of which requests we made. And we filed new petitions for grant of location on those revised seven, because they involved changing the locations, therefore they had different abutters. So Mr. Spanos thought, and I agreed, that those abutters were entitled to notice and due process. So we filed those applications. Those are before you tonight, along with the seven that I mentioned, that we understood were not objectionable to the council. So that's what we have. This is proposed as a settlement to the litigation. We have our next pre-trial conference on Monday. Litigation has been going now for, I think, about three years. I think we've gone over the technical specifications quite a bit, and I anticipated tonight would be the council's decision, one way or another, on those 14 petitions. But I am happy to answer any additional questions to the extent that I can.
Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Swiniewski. Attorney Swiniewski, have you come to terms with PBD Municipal Light Plant regarding the power connection, whether it be underground or overhead?
No, we have not.
You have not. So in that you've not come to an agreement with PMLP on the power connection, are you still agreeing to dismiss with prejudice both lawsuits if we approve these grants of location?
No. The proposal all along has been that we would dismiss the suits when we have all requisite permits to construct the facilities as proposed. If that requires slight modifications, we may do that, but we are not going to dismiss if we cannot build these. That really wouldn't make any sense.
Thank you. So is it, since the last hearing, is it true that the PBD Municipal Light Plant has provided Verizon with a draft agreement, providing for your, I think the right term is 5G attachments to go on existing PMLP poles?
They provided their stock agreement, but no price. And really, in speaking with PMLP pretty extensively, you know, aside from minor details, in principle, we don't have any real problems, as far as I know. I haven't reviewed in great detail, but the main area where we have not even come close to reaching an agreement is the price. So yes, they have provided the form, the paper, but we have not gotten anywhere close to a deal. I proposed a number, and the only number I have from PMLP is from when we first tried this two-plus years ago. We were very, 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 very far off, like six digits far off, not even remotely close. So we don't have that agreement, plain and simple.
If you did have that agreement, would it eliminate the need for cell towers and grants of locations?
It would, if we had that agreement, if we could reach an agreement on price, and assuming all of the other terms are agreeable, which I don't see any major issues there, then it would eliminate the need for the 14 poles in the petitions for grant of location that are before you tonight, as well as the wireless communication facility that is the subject of the appeal with the land court.
Thank you. Are you aware of the, an FCC draft declaratory ruling?
Yes.
You are. So if that's, I believe the FCC is positioned to take action on that on September 26th. So is it, is it true that that would preempt our role, and when I say our role, our role as the city council, in deploying the small wireless facilities?
I don't think it's that simple. They have proposed, in that rule, certain thresholds and guidelines that potentially must be followed by any state or municipal authority that's regulating the placement of these small cell facilities. To the extent that has an effect on what we're doing in Peabody, I don't know the answer. It hasn't been voted yet. When it is voted, it's still subject to administrative appeal. And further, you know, the fact that a federal law exists does not necessarily mean that everybody agrees upon the interpretation, or that everybody's going to follow it, because if they did, we wouldn't have a lawsuit going right now for the wireless communications facility on Lynn Street. So while that provides a certain amount of hope, it's not an ironclad resolution, far from it.
But as drafted, and if they act on it, and if it's favorable, it would invalidate any agreement with PMLP and obligate them to provide you rights, correct?
Yeah, under certain circumstances.
And it would also set rental fees, correct?
It doesn't set the fees. It sets a maximum fee that can be charged.
Well, it sets a maximum fee. So it does set a fee structure, correct?
It sets a maximum, so not a fee structure. I believe the maximum is 270-something dollars per pole per year. Again, as the maximum, we had proposed to PMLP the upper end of what we pay in this market in Massachusetts, which is 70 to 80 dollars. We're not prepared or willing to pay the maximum that is permissible, because that would be bad business.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I, while I have the floor, could I ask Mr. Tuera from PMLP to come up?
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Tuera. Mr. Tuera, is it, I just wanted to, you know, I've asked Attorney Swiniewski about the draft agreement that PMLP has put forward. I just want the council to hear from your end, the status of that agreement.
So we have actually been in discussions with them for quite some time. It's been a few years now on many different types of solutions, none that have been acceptable to them to this point. So the last potential solution that we have is a potential agreement to have them put their equipment on our existing poles. And we just put that together very recently, sent it to them Monday, and I just heard back from Mr. Swiniewski yesterday. So it's in the very early stages for this particular potential solution.
And is it your understanding, thank you, is it your understanding that the primary issue that you're aware of at this point is the fee structure?
I do not know that for sure. This is a brand-new agreement that we have not used in the past. I don't know, it is a template that was put together for the municipal light plant industry. My understanding from talking to the other municipal light plants is that nobody has used this yet to execute an agreement. So I'm not sure what Verizon Wireless' familiarity with that agreement would be either. So I just sent it to him Monday, as I said, and he got back to me late, I saw his email late yesterday, and he was asking about the fee structure, but I, we haven't discussed any of the terms and conditions of that agreement at any point to this time, so I don't know if the fee structure is going to be an issue, or if there'll be other issues that'll be, you know, harder to resolve than that.
Thank you, Mr. Tuera. And is it, you heard Attorney Swiniewski's response to the question about whether he believes it would eliminate the need for cell towers, but more specifically, what's before us tonight, these grants of location? Is that consistent with your understanding as well, that if you can come to agreement on that, that would eliminate the need for these grants of location?
Well, that is my understanding from what we have heard from them. You know, we're certainly not in the telecommunications business, so I'm not sure, you know, which potential solution would work for them, and with that solution, what other potential solutions wouldn't be needed. I'm not, I can't speak to that.
But based on what you've heard from the applicant, it's consistent with Mr. Swiniewski's response, that it would?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Open it up to the councilors.
Any other councilors? Counselors, any? Counselor Manning Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, if I may, ask the city solicitor a question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Please state your name, address.
City Solicitor Mike Smazinski.
Thank you, Mrs. Smazinski. I guess my question is, to me, it's very, it's just a simple question, whereas I'm confused if the council's role here, and just correct me if I don't have this right, the council's role here is to provide locations for this applicant, to provide locations. And if we agree to provide all the 14 locations, then our obligation, in my opinion, would be, would be met. The fact that beyond providing the locations involves negotiations with another whole entity, this council hasn't been involved or included in any negotiations that has been discussed with Mr. Sinieasky, and the light plant has just presented. So how could the council still be held accountable or responsible if we met our obligation to give them locations, but we're not in any control over whether they get the power, which, again, is in negotiations with another, with a third entity that doesn't involve the council? So, and just for lack of a better term, because I'm not an attorney, if the petitioner continues to come forward to us, knowing that he's failed in his negotiations to get power, I mean, is he continuing in good faith with this council, whose only obligation is to provide locations? Is that question clear?
Well, you said a number of things, and it's a compound question, so there are many aspects to it, although there are well-taking points made. So I'm going to try to break it down a little bit and respond to you piecemeal. You know, the first thing that I want to emphasize is, there's no obligation here. This was a proposal for a resolution primarily of the Michael's Limousine cell tower, and the arrangement was that these 14 grants of location would provide enough consideration to Verizon Selco to dismiss the lawsuit. So I don't want you to get the impression, since the word obligation was used, that somehow, some way, that there's some big hammer roll for you. Now, that's just...
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. No, I appreciate that, and that choice of word is just mine, but what I mean is, under federal law, he has rights to provide his clients service, and so we have to work with him in order to do that. So that's what I meant by our obligation under federal law, to allow him to provide his, to work with him, to provide his, to provide service to his clients.
Yes, so I'm not reading anything nefarious into the choice of word of obligation, and I can actually take it one step deeper, or one foot deeper. If there's an obligation, the obligation would have already arisen in terms of our disposition of the cell tower at Michael's Limousine. That's where federal law promoting, you know, the deployment of wireless communication facilities is evident and impacts us. That's part of, actually, both lawsuits. There's federal law and federal claims associated with them. In terms of the present-day obligation or federal control over the deployment of these grants of location for the 5G, which do two things. They take care of this gap and substantial coverage problem that goes all the way back to the Michael's Limousine case, but it gives them other capabilities. And that's, that's why, you know, this is an attempt at an arm's length, because, you know, they're getting something of value, and, you know, we eliminate a 60-foot cell tower in the backyard of neighbors. So in terms of obligation, I just wanted to clarify that. Now, to the real crux of your point, the thing that I can tell is eating at you is the idea that we're sitting here, and we have this proposal. Give us the 14 granted locations, we'll get rid of the lawsuit. But there's a problem, and the problem is that we may not be able to realize the actual construction of those lost, of those 14 new poles, because we haven't come to an agreement with PMLP. Well, we don't control PMLP, and I'll tell you, I've been in court having to clarify that relationship time and time again, and it's not within our jurisdiction to impede or invade their discretion on how they want to do their power connection. But I share with you the realization that we can grant these 14 locations, and our settlement is still in jeopardy, and it's in jeopardy because we don't control the conduct of a third party that's going to impact this outcome. Now, that's, that's a circumstance that is a factor that is to be weighed legislatively by you. You know, the question becomes, do you take that leap of faith and say, okay, we're willing to do it, or this is not that level of jeopardy that we want to wrap our arms around? But that's subject to the debate of all of you. Now, I will tell you that Selco and Verizon always envisioned that they could get the grants of locations and quote, you know, "work it out later with PMLP." Again, the risk of not having the lawsuits dismissed upon the grant of location is for you, and you alone as legislative body, to decide if it's worth doing that or not. And I think that kind of amplifies, you know, what was eating at you as, you know, a potential problem, a source of debate. Is that covered in?
Yes, thank you very much.
Counselor Melville?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to the city solicitor. I had a kind of a follow-up question on that. Would, if we should vote against, the council should vote against this proposal tonight, would, and PMLP and Verizon should continue their negotiations and come to a conclusion...
Counsel Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to the city solicitor, I had a kind of a follow-up question on that. Would, if we should vote against, the council should vote against this proposal tonight, would, and PMLP and Verizon should continue their negotiations and come to a conclusion, would we be required to vote for anything regarding any installation to those current poles that exist?
There's two answers to that. Under current law, no. That's not another grant of location by PMLP, like you just saw the young man present. And prospectively, if the FCC undertakes the expected action on September 26th, there's clearly not going to be any municipal, you know, local involvement on that process of, you know, deploying 5G facilities.
And if we were to flip that and say the council should be in favor, vote favorably on this petition, and then PMLP and Verizon continue their negotiations, and they come to a conclusion, and they decide maybe the pole locations don't make sense for Verizon if they can use currently existing for cost purposes or something along those lines, would they have to come back to us? Or is it the similar situation as we just discussed, where they, if we were to be, you know, it wouldn't be favorably voted on?
You know, albeit the reality that our names are somewhat similar, you know, I will take that step of acting like Mr. Swinneyaski momentarily. I think what he would like is to have the grant of locations in his back pocket and continue to negotiate with PMLP, because when you start talking about the cost of new poles underground, if it's going to go underground, compared to a fight between $80 and $280 for annual rental fee, I don't think there's any, you know, any question.
Thank you. Just a, I mean, that makes complete sense to me, as Attorney Swinneyaski had mentioned, that they are a business. I, my concern is, based on some of what we've heard in the past and reading up on what I have, since this has been going on well before I was on the council, that Verizon is acting as a business and that much of their negotiations and might not include anybody here, might not include any of the six of us that have to vote for that particular, that this is a, in fact, a part of a petition and not the final option, but one of the options that they have on the table to them. Is that, summarize that?
I think your general inquiry is, you know, if Verizon slash Selco ends up doing a deal with PMLP, whether it's overseen by the feds or not, that we're out of the process. You know, they're going to hypothetically be able to mount the antenna, you know, on poles that already have power, tap into the power, get the RFI blocks up, power that, and tap into fiber as they may need, but, you know, it's going on, it's existing infrastructure.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counsel Gould.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, can you summarize for us if, please, if we vote for the pole locations and PMLP and Verizon negotiate an agreement on power and price, do the two other pole locations, the initial Michael's Limousine and Cedar Grove, go away?
The terms that are on the table now with Verizon, and I can have Mr. Swinneyaski confirm it, that if they get the pole locations and they come to a, an arrangement with PMLP, their offer is, it will be, the two lawsuits will be dismissed, but you have to have both of those conditions met.
Do you get, can you tell us if that's the case with Mr. Swinneyaski, or can Mr. Swinneyaski tell us that? Please.
I think that's just about right, and to make it even clearer and simpler, if we can complete the 14 PMLP-owned poles, or if we can complete the 14 poles proposed to the council tonight at reasonable rates, then the lawsuits go away.
Thank you very much. Mr. Truera, can you please come up for one second? Glenn, in good faith, your team will do everything within their power to help resolve this situation in negotiation with Verizon?
Yes, we will. I mean, I think the light plants put quite a bit of time and effort into this situation over the last few years in trying to come up with solutions. We've come up with a number of solutions that have not seemed to have been acceptable. In fact, the solution that is before you tonight was one that we had come up with, with Verizon Wireless, to try to resolve this. And hearing a few things about the fee structure and those types of things, the fee structure is not the only issue that we've had during the course of this. There's been many other considerations that we've had, so I don't want it to seem like this is just an issue about money. The other thing I'd like to mention is, when we, in order to get to this point, our solution to them was, if you were to have Verizon, who has a grant of location in the city already, install 13 or 14 new solely-owned poles that would only be owned by Verizon, and if you put the underground electric service to those poles, Verizon Wireless could put up their equipment on those poles, and we would not oppose any of these petitions. So, that was made very clear to everybody. It was a solution that, at the time, everybody was happy with, and for someone, a company like Verizon Wireless, to put in those underground services to the new poles is not particularly onerous. It's the same requirement we would have of anybody who's putting in an underground service, that they would own it, and it would not be ours. So, it's consistent with our policies and procedures. But seeing that that solution doesn't seem to have gone over very well, we're certainly willing to look at more solutions, and that's why we've come up with this potential agreement, and we'll continue to work with them to see if we can get to some type of resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Swinneyaski, just kind of a procedural issue here. As you know, we have kind of two sets of hearings tonight because of the way this has played out over time, so just to, for the sake of efficiency, is it agreeable to you that I not ask you all these same questions that on the second hearing, that the, what we're discussing here with respect to these also applies to the later hearing? Is that agreeable to you?
Agreeable and preferable.
And preferable. I thought that might be the answer. Thank you. Could I just ask another question of the city solicitor, please, Mr. President? Through you to the city solicitor. You heard Attorney Swinneyaski's commentary about the declaratory ruling, and he was a little, I thought, vague on his response in terms of its meaning. Have you had an opportunity to review the declaratory ruling?
It's, it's just, it's a proposed order, a ruling in order by the FCCs. It's 117 pages, single space, margin to margin, top to bottom. I just, I actually just received it today. I've been able to get a summary of it and review the summary, so I can speak in a limited basis, but I can tell you that, you know, the expectation is something that's been, you know, building for a long time, that the FCC was going to grant the same type of federal protection that they did with cell towers and wireless communication for the telephone industry, equal to that of the 5G rollouts. And it looks like it's coming to fruition. But if you have a specific question, I'll do my best to answer it, bearing in mind those limitations.
Yeah, well, you know, my specific question is, based on your understanding of it at this point, do you believe it would, it would, the same question I asked Attorney Swinneyaski is, do you believe it would preempt our role, our role as the city council in deployment of small cell wireless facilities?
The answer to that is yes, and that, you know, the ambit of the FCC endeavor, you know, from a regulatory standpoint, is to provide access to existing poles, existing power at, you know, some capped minimal rate that's somewhat related to the actual cost of the pole and power owner-operator, so that, you know, these deployments can in fact be made. And again, the whole idea is, you know, to create the framework within which to safely mount these things, especially near the power conductors, the three-phase and the single-phase, the primaries and the secondaries, in a way that's reasonable and safe, but at the same time, take advantage of existing locations so that we don't get into this, you know, we'll promise to be, you know, a line of people coming in looking for grants of locations if this solution is not realized on a federal level.
Thank you. So, is it, is it fair to say, if the FCC acts favorably on this on September 26th, the applicant, the petitioner, has a solution? If the FCC does not act favorably on it, they could, the petitioner could fall back on their agreement, which is under negotiation with PMLP? So, there's kind of belts and suspenders on this at this point, from the standpoint of the petitioner?
My rudimentary understanding, and I do tip my hat off at the assistance PMLP has afforded me over the last four-plus years, but that understanding is one where, if there's an agreement that comes to fruition between a private, I mean, not a municipal light plant and a wireless communication carrier, that in fact, that would be voided, and the new regulations would mandate a whole 'nother set of terms and conditions of a contractual nature, probably not that far off from what was created on the Massachusetts state level, you know, the organization with which PMLP belongs. And if there is a delay in the implementation through the administrative adjudicatory process of rulemaking and regulation formulation, there very well could be an agreement with PMLP that covers the gap between now and then, wherever then is. Does that answer your question?
You certainly did. My Reader's Digest version of that is, it could work either way. It could, the PMLP agreement could come and then ultimately later be superseded by the FCC ruling, or the FCC ruling could come and there'd be no need for the PMLP agreement. Is that fair enough?
That's my understanding, and, you know, I have no pride in authorship, so if you ask the other people in the room about this and see what they say, I'd certainly love the support.
Sure, well, I'll ask that same question to Attorney Swinneyaski. Is that a fair characterization, as I just summarized?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, so if, if, if this, as your understanding of the FCC declaratory ruling, if that, if that happens, goes through favorably, that does provide a solution. If it doesn't provide a solution, you can fall back on potentially an agreement that is, remains in negotiation with PMLP. Is that reasonable?
Both are potential. Neither would be a solution in my mind, because neither is complete. The FCC ruling, which is pretty long, came out on Monday, has not been reviewed or evaluated by the city solicitor or myself. So, we have litigation over laws that are a paragraph-long as to what they mean. That's what litigation's all about. This is a lot longer, so we don't know what it means yet. Generally with laws, we figure out what they mean when a court interprets them, when they've been tested in litigation. As we understand it, if that rule is passed, and if all stakeholders abide by the rule, which is a big if, it's never given, and if facilities are built on the ground operational, that's the solution. There's potential for a right to a solution, but it's not a solution until it's real life.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other councilors? I just had a couple of questions, if not. If, you know what, I could have asked all three of you to come up, because it's probably going to ask all city solicitor and electric light to come up, because you may all have a real quick one, too. My understanding, it just seems to get more complicated as time goes on, so I'm glad two attorneys can interpret so much differently than we can, I guess. I look at this, wait. You want, to Verizon, you want to grant locations for the poles. You also want to be able to go and negotiate with PMLP. You want to be able to hang on to the lawsuits, and now the fourth one is the potential of the federal law. So, you got four, you kind of want all the four aces in your pocket. Am I looking at the wrong that way? I mean, be realistic with me. We're all trying to be realistic at this point. It seems like you want to have all four aces, and that's not, that's good for you, but...
Well, I don't think it's four. I think there are three scenarios. The federal rule is not really a new or different solution. It might provide some guidelines that should be followed in getting to the two, or actually, yeah, the two solutions. So, I agree with you. There are three solutions here, and I am not willing to give up any one of them until I have one locked down. It would be incredibly foolish for me to do so.
Now, with the electric light company, it's probably, I can say probably, the most respected agency or organization that's in this city right now by the viewers of the constituents of this city. They think residents in puberty is so believed in electric light to do the right thing, right? Glenn, these rates that you're looking for, for the poles, is that such a significant rate that the rates for the residents will go down if they pay your high end? If you can come up. I'm just trying to get my hands around the rate that you're looking for. Is it that significant that the rates, electric light rates for residents in puberty will go down?
So, in terms of the rates, and this situation is changing almost daily. So, as we've gone through the process, we've looked at a number of different options. We look at what the other municipal light plants are doing. We're looking at whether other systems are in place and what type of revenue they're trying to get. So, what we're trying to do is just enter into a reasonable deal for the customers of the light plant. Nothing more, nothing less. So, when we talk about the rates, it has changed over time based on what's going on with the industry and what's going on with the other municipal light plants and whatnot. So, they made an offer just recently of the $70 to $80, and this $270 figure that's been thrown out came up as part of the FCC order that they're going to rule on on September 26th. So, these are brand-new figures to us. So...
So, the average, our rates aren't going to go down. You're not going to make a cash flow off these poles.
No.
Right? And the cost to Verizon to install new poles must be significantly more than it would be to rent the poles.
I think so. Well...
Right, so they would...
I don't know how much it costs to rent a pole.
But they would, the numbers we have, it's going to be significantly more money.
I can tell you, we would prefer to go on the existing poles if we can pay the market... I can tell you, we would prefer to go on the existing poles if we can pay the market rate.
Yeah. And I just, I have a hard time having you have all the aces, and you get one, and then that lawsuit doesn't go away. I have a hard time understanding if that's going to happen.
When I get one... Should I take that? Oh, sorry, Glenn.
When I get one, meaning get it completely so that I can actually build it, the lawsuits most certainly go away. But what I cannot do is say the lawsuits go away when there are still undecided factors because then I don't really have it, and I can walk away with nothing. And that's not my job. I cannot do that.
And this is, when you said you get, is what you determine is right?
Not necessarily. I mean, I'm telling you what we will agree to. So for the PMLP-owned poles, we have offered the market average, what we pay in this region, in this area, $70 to $80 per pole per year. You think about how much money that is, it's nothing. It's not worth arguing over. However, that is becoming a factor now to the federal government, and I can explain why. It's pretty easy to understand. We're not looking at, this isn't about 14 poles in PBD. This sets precedent. As I'm sure Glenn will tell you, in trying to determine how much PMLP should ask for, they call every other municipal light plant. Now, the anticipated rollout of the new technology that everyone's calling 5G, we're talking about millions of poles, maybe in 10 to 15 years, billions of poles in America. At that point, the small amounts of dollars matter. So in the context of this small, isolated proceeding, we're talking about not much money here at all. But that is the reasoning why we can't go up. I know in talking with Mike, you know, he asked, well, what is a, you know, 100, 200, whatever, however many dollars matter. I'm explaining to you, that's why it matters because we cannot set the precedent of those prices being that high because then it makes it impossible. And that's what the FCC agrees with as well. That's why this rule is coming to a vote at the end of this month.
Thank you. Have all, Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President, for coming back to me. I just, because Attorney Swinyarski, you stepped away from the microphone there. You made a comment that was away from the mic, and I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, that, I believe you said, your preference is to go on the existing poles if you can get the market rate. Is that, is that the, is that an accurate reflection of your statement? So your preference is to go on the existing poles? Is that...
So let me just clarify. The market rate that we proposed, that's our preferred option here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other counselors? Hearing none. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion? Counselor Rosinol?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor or against this, so I would hold off before we close the public hearing and ask if there's any residents that would like to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Counsel. We got into a long debate. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in the audience opposed? Please come up and state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Christopher Jasper. I am at 737 Lowell Street in PBD. I am here to address a particular pole location proposed by Verizon, and that would be pole on the list that was sent out, SC-01, Lowell Street, opposite Birch Street.
So that would be on the next hearing?
Oh, that's next hearing? Okay. Jump the gun?
No, not at all.
I apologize to the counsel.
No, don't do that. I apologize.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. You made a motion to close the hearing. Any, all in favor? Any opposed? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to deny the petitions filed by Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless Care, McLean, Middleton, 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, specifically to locate communication equipment on existing or proposed new Verizon utility poles, including antenna conduit cable, and all necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures located on various public ways as follows. Number one, SC-23, existing pole located at the northwest intersection of Lenin County Street, vicinity of 91 Lynn Street. Number two, SCO-1, new pole located at northeast intersection of Lowell and Birch Street, vicinity of 747 Lowell Street. Number three, SCO-2, new pole located at Dearborn Road at Newbury Street. Number four, SCO-8, new pole located on Forest Street at Newbury Street. Number five, SC-30, new pole located on Forest Street, vicinity of 101 Foster Street. Number six, SC-21, new pole located on Lynn Street, vicinity of 24 Lynn Street. Number seven, SC-24, new pole located on Lynn Street, vicinity of 168 Lynn Street. Number eight, SC-20, new pole located on Hingston Street at Washington Street, vicinity of 250 Washington Street. Number nine, SC-50, new pole located on Pulaski Street, a corner of North Central Street. Number 10, SC-60, new pole located on Essex Center Green, across from U.S. Post Office. Number 11, SC-63, new pole located on Essex Green Drive, vicinity of Essex Green at PBD. Number 12, SC-10, new pole located on First Avenue 5 at Centennial Drive. Number 13, SC-51, new pole located on King Street, vicinity of 15 King Street. Number 14, SC-22, new pole located on Margaret Road at the corner of 66 Lynn Street for the following reasons taken independently or in combination. Number one, the petitioner has offered that approval of this petition was in exchange with a dismissal of both cell tower lawsuits it has pending in the land court and will not honor that offer by conditioning performance on the unresolved issue of a power connection, the resolution of which is not within the control of the city. Number two, PBD Municipal Light Plant has offered to the petitioner a master agreement for small cell attachments upon existing poles, eliminating the need for the requested grant of locations or cell towers and/or... Number three, on September 26, 2018, the FCC is prepared to approve a ruling on an order preempting local jurisdiction over small cell deployment to existing poles generating rights in such deployment to the petitioner greater than or equal to those in the PBD Municipal Light Plant Agreement and eliminating the need for the requested grant of locations or cell towers. So moved. And, Mr. President, on the motion, I have listed all 14 locations to eliminate doubt to the extent it could be construed that the original applications for SCO-1, SC-30, SC-21, SC-24, SC-20, SC-51, and SC-22 are still viable. Thank you.
Heard the motion? Any language on the motion? Yes. Counselor Gould?
My head is spinning. I guess I need some clarification before we vote. Counselor McGinn, you made a motion to deny. So if we want to approve the poles, we vote no, not to deny. Correct?
Correct. It's a motion to deny, so a yes vote denies.
Okay. Simple.
All clear. Counselor Melville? Counselor Rosinol? After that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Was that for all 14 poles, Counselor McGinn? Because you had mentioned that before and you had listed them off. With that, I guess it's just a clarification. We haven't, was it the 14 original? Through you, Mr. President?
Mr. President, through you to Counselor Melville. So there were seven that have changed, but they, it could be construed that the original seven may still be valid applications. They were amended, but they were never, the originals weren't withdrawn. So in fact, we have 21 things before us within the two hearings. So this, I listed all 14, including the original seven that were later amended to avoid any doubt as to the completeness of the motion.
Counselor Rosinol? Counselor Manning after.
Sorry, I had the same question that Counselor Melville did, so my question's answered. Thank you.
Counselor Manning-Martin, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if the seven original are, if all 14 are included, and seven of which, six, how many counselors weren't here? Five counselors weren't here? How can we vote on them all lumped in together? Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Tim.
Maybe this is...
I don't have any answer to that question, Counselor.
Maybe our city solicitor would be better suited to answer that?
Mr. President? Yeah, I think it's a great idea to bring the city solicitor up, but, you know, my, the original seven that were later amended are included as originally written, not in their amended form. So if you're not eligible to vote in the first hearing, this only deals with the seven that we put in the, let's call it uncontested category, and then the seven that ultimately changed in their original form. So there still will be a second hearing with respect to the new seven. Hopefully that didn't make it more confusing, but that's...
I'm still at the same place, but thank you for the effort.
Perhaps the city solicitor would be...
Thank you.
Counselor McGinn described it correctly. That's all I can say. He's got it right.
All right. I'm going to ask Counselor McGinn to say it one more time because, Maz, I think you may confuse us a little bit more.
Mr. President, I'll just repeat essentially what I said a moment ago, which is that there were seven that we had in more or less an uncontested category. There were another seven that were later amended. However, those seven that were amended were never formally withdrawn. Although they showed up on the agenda as crossed out, they were never formally withdrawn. So there is no misunderstanding. They're included in my motion in the original text, not as the amended. So we're still going to have that second hearing for the second set of polls. But for the, in the interest of thoroughness and completeness, I've listed all 14 of the original poles here in this motion.
Counselor Manning-Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I understand you're keeping the seven subsequent ones separate, and we're going to vote on them, and then the full council can vote on those. I don't understand if, how you would have us vote on the original ones when we weren't there for the original ones, the original seven that have been changed. We weren't there for that hearing.
Let's be clear, and I'm going to ask Tim to read off the six counselors that will be voting.
Okay. So that's clear. Okay, so this is your separate, thank you. That makes it clear. That was simple. Thank you.
Just for clarification...
I'm sorry, Counselor Gavell?
I mean, can't we make this like really simple for people who are listening to this at home? Basically, he just read off the entire list that was on 4B. So all that's being voted on here is 4B, of which a bunch of us can't vote on it, right?
Roll call, please.
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
No.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
No.
Charis?
Yes.
The motion to deny fails four to two. So the motion to deny succeeds. No, then it failed. It failed. He needs six votes. It failed, the motion to deny. Right.
Counselor McGinn, do you have any thoughts?
I would move for reconsideration.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Roll call, please.
This is reconsideration, hope and same shall not prevail.
Counselor McGinn?
This is a motion for reconsideration in hopes that the motion does prevail.
Okay.
So Counselor McGinn, would you like to elaborate on what you are hoping a...
I'm not allowed to do that under the council rules, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, can we take two minutes so we follow the right procedure here and get it straight? It's been long... Not, excuse me?
Mr. President requested two-minute recess.
He just wants to get his thoughts straight. Counselor Turco, please don't go too far. We're going to...
So a yes vote would reconsider?
A yes vote would reconsider the vote? Roll call, please.
Is everybody here?
Yeah, everyone's here.
Okay. Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries six to nothing.
We take a two-minute recess, Mr. President.
Two-minute recess. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the same motion before us, which I will, in the interest of time, will not read again. It's already been read into the record. So it is a motion to deny, and a, again, for the sake of clarity, a yes vote is to deny. Thank you, Mr. President. It's the same motion.
Same motion, same members voting. Roll call. Counselor Melville?
I just want to clarify that, so we will be having a second hearing on the follow-up polls. We have somebody standing by for, that that is going to be part of the discussion going forward. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Roll call.
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould? Yes, okay. Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries six to nothing.
For C, would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice hereby given that the city council, the city of PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 13, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD. City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the following petitions filed by Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, Carib, McLean, Middleton, 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, specifically to locate communications equipment on existing or proposed new Verizon utility poles, including antenna, conduit cable, and all necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures located on various public ways as follows. SC-01, new pole located on the southwest side of Lowell Street, opposite Birch Street. SC-20, new pole located on the northwest side of Washington Street, at, at the Eastman-Jellican Field, opposite 256 Washington Street. SC-21, new pole located on Lynn Street, corner of Trofen Lane. SC-22, new pole located on Lynn Street, corner of Rainbow Road slash 82 Lynn Street. SC-24, new pole located on Lynn Street, vicinity of 161 Lynn Street. SC-30, new pole located on Foster Street, vicinity of 101 Foster Street. SC-51, new pole located on King Street, vicinity of 15 King Street. PBD City Council Counselor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
If I can just interrupt one moment, one thing I missed is the open meeting law statement. This meeting is being televised live by Cable. Channel nine is being taped by a PBD Access TV and also recorded by a city council stenographer. Would the petitioner, petitioner, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and what you'd like to do.
My name is Chris Sweeneyarsky. I'm an attorney for Verizon Wireless. My address is the McLean Middleton Law Firm at 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire.
What are you looking, looking to do?
I may need a little clarification myself now. The prior, the vote that just transpired, would that be the seven locations that were previously revised with new location petitions?
Counselor McGinn, would you like to clarify?
No, that vote was, was pertaining to seven that were never revised, so, so that subset of polls, right? So, and then there were some that were amended, but those that were amended still were live applications because they were never withdrawn. So, so they're, so if we're just doing a count, we had fourteen things in front of us, plus another seven things because of the seven amendments. So now we are in a separate public hearing for the seven amended applications.
Understood. So the previous vote was for the fourteen initial petitions for grant of location?
That is correct.
Understood. Well, as the council knows, this was presented as a package deal to settle litigation, so I don't think any further presentation is needed by me. I'd like the council to simply make a decision on the petitions before them and the proceedings that have transpired to this point.
Before that, we will listen to anyone in the audience that have anything to say in favor or in opposition. In favor first, in opposition. Anyone, please come to the podiums, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Christopher Jasper. I am at 737 Lowell Street, here in PBD. I'm here to address the pole location SC-01, Lowell Street, opposite Birch Street. I oppose this antenna communications location, and I'd like to cite the city ordinance of 7.9.6, Pot B, Section 2, under setbacks. The minimum distance for this wireless communication facility, it states, must be at least 500 feet from any residence. My residence and several others are approximately 250 feet or less. If the antenna is on top of the pole, it's in direct plane to my house, and, which, my house at that location is very high. So that means, being in direct plane, it's right into my bedroom, very viewable. Secondly, I do not believe that Verizon can meet the FCC or the Commonwealth of Mass Department of Health Regulations stated in Sydney, City Ordinance 7.9.12, under testing. As you may or may not know, these are continuous communication devices, which residents will be subjected to that RF radiation 24 hours a day. I don't oppose the technology, but I believe in this particular case with this pole, consideration could be taken for at least two other locations in the area that would be away from people's houses and that would more than likely meet the 500-foot distance as cited in the 7.9.6, Pot B, Section 2, under the setbacks. My final point is, is I do run from my location an amateur radio station. I am FCC licensed, I have many FCC licenses that I've tested for. So I'd like it to be known that if they do install that communication, that wireless communication facility there, and my station suffers an engineering term called harmful interference, I will be filing petition with the FCC on that. And I'd like to thank the council for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Open the, open it to the floor of the council, any counselors. Hearing seen none, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an administrative point. We heard earlier from Attorney Sweeneyarsky that he was agreeable to considering all the questions and answers and information recorded for the record for the, for the prior public hearing to apply to this public hearing as well. He's agreed and, and I believe said it was preferable. So just to let the record reflect that, that that information also is germane to this hearing, and, and I just want to make sure that that's noted.
Sir noted.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm not sure if counselors have specific questions on polls, or how, how, what the council's will is with respect to taking this on as a group of polls, or if they want to ask questions individually. If there is a desire to take this as a group, I'd be prepared to make a motion in that regard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselors, are you willing to take this as a group, or would you like to take it individually? If there's a question on taking it individually, will you please recognize, be recognized? So with that being said, seeing no objections, I believe Counselor McGinn will take this as a group.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, hearing no further debate on this, I would move to close the public hearing.
Heard the motion, all, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to deny the petitions filed by Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless, Carib, McLean, Middleton, 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, specifically to locate communications equipment on existing or proposed new Verizon utility poles, including antenna, conduit, cable, and all necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures located on various public ways as follows. Number one, SC-01, new pole located on the southwest side of Lowell Street, opposite Birch Street. Number two, SC-20, new pole located on northwest side of Washington Street, at Eastman-Jellican Field, opposite 256 Washington Street. Number three, SC-21, new pole located on Lynn Street, corner of Trofen Lane. Number four, SC-22, new pole located on Lynn Street, corner of Rainbow Road slash 82 Lynn Street. Number five, SC-24, new pole located on Lynn Street, vicinity of 161 Lynn Street. Number six, SC-30, new pole located on Foster Street, vicinity of 101 Foster Street. Number seven, SC-51, new pole located on King Street, vicinity of 15 King Street, for the following reasons, taken independently or in combination. Number one, the petitioner has offered that approval of this petition was in exchange with a dismissal of both cell tower lawsuits it has pending in the land court and will not honor that offer by conditioning performance on the unresolved issue of power connection to the resolution of which is not within the control of the City of PBD. Number two, the PBD Municipal Light Plant has offered to the petitioner a master agreement for small cell attachments upon existing poles, eliminating the need for the requested grant of locations or cell towers and/or. Number three, on September 26th, I'm sorry, September 26, 2018, the FCC is prepared to approve a ruling and order preempting local jurisdiction over small cell deployments to existing poles, generating rights in such deployment to the petitioner greater than or equal to those in the PBD Municipal Light Plant Agreement, and eliminating the need for the requested grants of locations or cell towers. So moved.
You heard the motion? Roll call on the motion.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Missoulis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
No.
Rosagnol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
No.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to two.
Move to 4D, please. Clerk, please read the notice. Counselor Missoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a letter from the attorney, Kelty, asking to continue the public hearing to, till the date of October 11th. So moved.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Missoulis, can you just clarify, how many times has this been continued? Do you know?
How many? It's, how long has this been going on? Yeah, well, you know, it's been a while, and as the ward counselor, I don't have a problem with that, and I will explain this probably at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
4E, can I have a motion to accept late communication? Someone? Counselor Turco?
Move to receive late communication from attorney Jack Kelty requesting.
Continuance.
Senator Corp, excuse me, requesting a continuance till September 27th meeting.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Move to 4F. Counselor Saslaw.
No.
I think that's me, Mr. President.
Counselor McGinn, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did we go to, did we go to 4F?
4F, we're on that now.
Thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, under suspension of the rules, move to receive late communication from stamped by the city clerk's office dated September 10, 2018, and refer to this matter, so moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive a letter from attorney Kelty dated September 13, 2018, requesting a continuance, so moved.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to continue the hearing listed on there, item 4F, so moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
4G, clerk, please read in the notice.
Notice hereby given that the City Council, the City of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 13, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Gucci Naffy LLC, Scotty McGregor Manager, 133 Granby Road, South Hadley, Mass, for a special permit seeking to allow for an adult paraphernalia store doing business as Adam and Eve at 212-216 Newbury Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Counselor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner, petitioner, please come to the podium? Please state your name and address and what you'd like to do for the record.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Ethan Von Zalitis. I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Andover Street in PBD, and I'm here on behalf of the petitioner with respect to this evening's application. Mr. McGregor is the owner of a franchise known as Adam and Eve. For those of you who may, may not be familiar with that particular store, Adam and Eve is a specialty boutique store which offers for sale a woman's lingerie in both regular and plus sizes, shoes, boots, swimwear, cover-ups, along with various accessories such as potty goods for a bachelor or bachelorette parties, various lotions, oils, DVDs, candles, and various adult-themed pleasure products, which others may refer to as adult toys. Mr. McGregor has a lease to occupy approximately 5,900 square feet of space at the building at 212 Newbury Street. The store is gonna be situated between the Niemco Pool Business and the Workout World Fitness Club. However, I think it is important to note that a modern Adam and Eve store is not the 1970s adult store of yesterday. There are no video booths, there's no display of nudity, there's no live models or live entertainment, there's no sexually provocative posters that are displayed in the storefronts. In fact, these stores are intentionally designed to look like any other retail store that you'd find as you're walking through any of the surrounding malls. The first half of the store facing Newbury Street will contain and display the lingerie, clothes, shoots, boots, and other clothing. It will also contain two dressing rooms. The rear section of the store, which will not be visible from the outside, will contain and display the adult-themed products, and will have an office, bathrooms, and obviously any area for inventory. In other words, these stores are intentionally designed to look like any other boutique shop where any adult-themed products are discreetly displayed so they cannot be seen from any of our front windows. In essence, his business is similar to Victoria's Secrets, obviously minus the adult products. It's anticipated the store is gonna have ten employees, we'd have two or three employees per shift. His hours of operation would be Monday through Thursday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Friday and Saturday from 10:00 AM to midnight, and Sundays from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Mr. McGregor owns another Adam and Eve franchise that's in Greenfield, the Mass. Believe it or not, that store is situated on one of their main streets, and his business has been well accepted by that community, as evidenced by his letter of recommendation that he got from the Franklin County Chamber of Commerce. I believe I attached a copy to the application. I do believe this proposal conforms to all the requirements as it's set forth in Section 6.5. As required, our property is situated on the south side of Route 1, and it is situated in the BR1 zoning district. As required, we're not within 200 feet from the property boundary lines of any lots in residential use. In fact, the abutting property to the rear of us is a large parcel of land, it's owned by the Northeast Nurseries, and it's actually used as a composting facility. As required under the ordinance, we are not within 1,000 feet of any other adult use, and as required, we are not within 200 feet of any liquor establishments. I do have Mr. McGregor here with me this evening, and will try to answer any questions. that the council or the public may have. Thank you.
I could open up to the public first. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition? Hearing and seeing none, Counselor Sasslaw.
Thank you, Council President. So for me, this is a first as far as, I think for many of the counselors on the council, this is a first where we have an adult paraphernalia store looking to come to the city. Before I got here, there were ordinances passed on where these businesses, previous councils thought would be best for the city. And so, as the council has stated, they certainly have looked into 6.5 and put it in a place that has been zoned for this particular use. But even though they conform, I think that there are other circumstances, and I'm going to use the word mitigating factors, that make this not the appropriate location. I think it's important that I be clear and state them so that my fellow counselors can feel comfortable on why I'm going to oppose this. Also, I know that sometimes people are concerned about litigation. I think I will lay out the reasons why these mitigating factors, I think, would hold up if any litigation was to occur. The property that we're talking about, this is a shopping plaza that has two businesses that have a lot of under-18 activity. The first business is a gym called WOW. In this gym, they offer babysitting services available so that customers can work out and that people...so that they can...on their website, they say you can work out and know that your child are in reliable hands. And that's one piece of it. The second piece that I looked into that really concerned me is that I reached out to the facility, and I asked them what was the minimum age that someone could join the gym without adult supervision? And the answer is 16 years of age without adult accompaniment, accompanied by an adult. So that, to me, right there was a red flag as far as minors possibly being subjected to going, you know, being near the facility, this proposed establishment. And I didn't feel comfortable with that. The next business that's in the same shopping plaza is Mass Bay Hockey Center. And Mass Bay Hockey Center, when you go to their Facebook page, well, what are they about? They're a mini rink focusing on skills development and youth hockey leagues. So some of you who've played youth hockey, you've heard the words squirts, mites, midgets. Once again, the base of their business is not...it's a mini rink. It's not for adult leagues, it's not for adult to go out and play hockey, it's to train youth and have them there. So that initially...those two initially concerned me. The last thing in regard to youth being very core to this business is next door, directly abutting the shopping plaza, many of you are familiar with the Martial Arts Academy. And if you go to that Martial Arts Academy, and you go to their website, and it talks about who do they train? Little ninjas, three to six years old, juniors, seven to 12 years old, teens and adults, 13-plus years, and special needs, three-plus years. So for me, those are the red flags that while it might be zoned, I feel that this particular dress is not appropriate because of the abutting businesses and the clientele being the youth that they serve. In addition, I look at this a little bit different, even though I'm a ward counselor. This is on Route 1. I look at this as a city issue, not really a neighborhood issue. I will tell you that the amount of phone calls, emails that I have gotten, Facebook posts, the fellow residents have clearly expressed to me not having...for some of the reasons I've expressed and others, not having an interest in having this business at this plaza. When I look at the description of the business, and this is a very difficult one, but I feel you have to take it on, we have a cause of special permit. Is there a local desirable need? So you look at what they offer. They offer lingerie, club and dance wear, shoes, boots, swimwear, cover-ups, accessories such as lotions, oils, videos, DVDs, and adult-themed toys and pleasure products. I consider and tell you in the research that I've done that I know of at least a minimum of three businesses that offer either all these products or portion of these products. I did not have one person come up to me, talk about competition, it's best for the community, a better product, a better price. That's usually why we will...when we're talking about special permits, we feel that, you know, we have no right to deny them because if people want to open up the business and offer product, they should. But I can tell you in this particular situation, once again, going back to the special permit process, I saw no local desirable need expressed. And then in my research that I did and going to stores across the city, and not just on Route 1 South, but in other areas, these products were available. And as I said, I had no one stating to me that they felt that there was a lack of opportunity to buy these products or purchase them. So for those are the reasons why I won't be supporting this. If I feel that this will fail and that...excuse me, if it will pass, I will then ask to put some conditions on the business as far as the windows, the hours of operation, the age. But I'm going to save everyone that type of activity, that type of conversation if I feel that it will pass. If it's going to fail, then I don't feel that I need to get into the restrictions that I'll put on the business, the conditions. So I'm going to open up to the floor, hopefully be able to tell from my counselors where you feel. And as I said, if I feel it's going to pass, then I will then get into conditions I would put on the special permit. Thank you.
Counsel, would you like to respond? A lot was said.
I'd just like to clarify some things. I am disappointed to hear that you have a problem with this proposal. I did discuss it with you prior to filing. You were familiar with the property. You were actually familiar with the Adam and Eve store and thought that it would work. From listening to your reasonings, it seems to be what impact is it going to have on the children? What is it you think people are going to see when they walk past the store? This is going to be like walking in the mall past a Victoria's Secrets. The front half of the store is nothing but lingerie, clothes, shoes, that's it. Adam and Eve has a franchise requirement that nobody under the age of 18 can get into the store. Are you afraid that when you walk by, there's going to be obscene posters of naked men and women holding a large sex toy? No, they don't do that. And I do have to make a comparison because it seems like the impact on children seems to be the issue here. You know, there are counselors, and I believe you're one of them, that are big advocates that the city of PBD should be approving the retail sale of marijuana. And I can't say that I'm against that policy, and I can't say that I'm for it. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm still balancing it out in my head. But I have to ask myself, okay, what's more detrimental to children? Are we going to have retail pot shops where they're advertising their product in their windows with displaying all the drug paraphernalia or a four-inch vibrator in a sexy nightgown? Call me stupid, but I think it's the part. My client's business is not going to have any negative impact on the children. They're not going to see anything that they don't see in the mall. If you have a fear that our store is going to be overrun with 13- and 14-year-old children, again, no one under the age of 18 can get into this complex. And you talk about competition or a desirable local need. Are you saying we're not going to allow any more restaurants in the city of PBD because we have several of them? Come on. So I do have my client here with me this evening. Like I said, he's got a facility in Greenfield. It's on a main street, and he's got a letter of recommendation from their Chamber of Commerce. Are you trying to tell me to give him a letter of recommendation if it has an adverse effect to their youth? That's all I have to say.
Counsel Sasslaw, would you like to rebut?
At this time, thank you.
Open it up to the floor. Counselors? Any counselors have anything to say? Counsel Razagnall? Counsel Turco? I'm sorry, your hand wasn't...yes, Counsel Turco.
Thank you.
Sorry.
The only thing I wanted to say, I am actually in favor of it and because it meets the zoning requirements. We set up a district for this specifically, and I think the effort has always been to keep these establishments out of the neighborhoods. And we put it in this area with these zoning requirements. They've met all of those. I'm in agreement with the attorney that children aren't going to go into WOW, and their mothers are going to say, hey, you know, run on over to Adam and Eve. But ultimately, what made my decision was the fact that I can go to CVS on Lynnfield tree 10 feet from my house, and there's an aisle in CVS with sex toys. So I don't really kind of get the moral conflict here. We have a store that has agreed that they will not display this, these items. There will be no children under 18, but you can go to the condom aisle in CVS and find multiple sex toys, which they conveniently call massage items in the store. And there's probably three shelves worth of those items. So that's why I would vote in favor of it. I think it's zoned properly, it's in the right place, and it does not cause issue for children.
Can I also clarify one thing? There are over 60 Adam and Eve stores. Statistically, 75% of their sales is more in the intimate apparel than in the lingerie area, and the remaining 25% is more of your adult-themed products, just so the council knows.
Any counselors? Any other counselors? Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to speak briefly. I do want to, I guess, just give a brief thought on this. Some of the councils have spoken their reasons for or against this special permit. I come at it quite simply as certainly we live in a world, this stuff is out there. We're not trying to shelter people. It has been properly zoned. It would fit into the required zoning. However, I don't...the reason why I'm not supporting this is it does not, in my opinion, satisfy the desirable local need. This material is available at other places, online or whatnot. I don't come at it from a moral standpoint. I just don't think we have a number of these. I don't see this particular additional location as a desirable local need, so that's why I'm not in favor of this special permit. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Gravel? No? Drink water. Okay. I just don't want to miss you, that's all. If no one else has, I just had a couple of questions and a statement, I guess. We have an adult-themed zone, and I believe if my facts was correct, it was established in 2004. Am I correct? 2004. The store that is down the street that sells similar products was awarded a special permit in 2006. Am I correct? I have an issue when we start saying no to a business because we think we have enough of them in the city. I know we trot that line when it comes to Keno, but we certainly don't do that when it comes to gas stations, 7-Elevens, or even restaurants. We set up, and I say we, this council, prior to myself, set up a zoning where we say this is where we want that type of business. And I believe we were needed to do that because of state law. And then we set conditions to what needs to be done, setbacks, restrictions, so on and so on. And then if, again, this is not a moral position of mine, it's what my position here is, and certainly as the council president, to take a stand on what we do and the votes we make. And I'm not trying to deter anybody from casting a vote, but from my understanding is that we need to do what is right by law and by ordinance. And if a business does not meet those conditions, then we have the right and duty to say you do not meet those conditions. And we have some pretty strict conditions. And this business has met every single one, except for what you could arguably say, do we need...is there a need for it? Well, apparently, there is a need out there with people because they have 60-plus stores. We have people who go shopping for Valentine's. We have people shop for birthdays. We got people to shop at these stores for all particular reasons. I do not want to peek in their bedrooms and see what they're using the product for. It's none of my business. My business is to grant or deny a business based on, is it the right fit? And we set those guidelines. We've already set those. We said this is where it needs to be, on the south side, within the district of residential zones and all these things. I'm very concerned with any litigation that comes out from this because we...Counselor Sasslaw, you're absolutely right, doing the right thing, looking out for your ward. I commend you for that. But I have a hard time denying something that fits all the credentials that we set. I asked the city solicitor, are we meeting...are we...is this business meeting all the credentials that we set forth in our ordinance for the location? Or am I missing anything?
The only additional item that would have to be complied with is a statutory record check as to specific crimes. No person involved in the operation can have a prior conviction for contributing to the delinquency of a minor, procuring a miscarriage or disseminating harmful matter to minors. And that would be the subject of a record check after a special permit be given, but before the building permitted or occupancy permit.
Thank you. And the one other thing I'd like to make note is that the other facilities and businesses that surround this facility, I believe they moved in and chose to be in an adult zone prior...after the ordinance was set. So it's not like they were there and we made the ordinance that is now an adult zone. These businesses chose to be in that particular location. So I guess that's really all I need to say, is that I look at it as how we set our ordinances and do we have the right legitimately to say no. Thank you.
Can I just bring up one other point?
Certainly.
I don't know this for a fact.
Well, if you don't know it for a fact...
No, no, it has to do with, I'm starting to believe that this is the only location on Route 1 South that can be used for an adult use. Because I believe the remaining part of Route 1 South that's in PBD, we have a prohibition from being within 200 feet of land that's being used for residential use. And I think the remaining land is basically abutted by either mobile homes, condominiums, or definitive subdivisions. We may be down to the last location on Route 1. Thank you.
Counselor Sasslaw.
As far as that last comment, I think that should be strict, and I think that's ridiculous to say that if you don't know that personally. I think that's highly unprofessional. I think that's highly unprofessional to suggest that to the counselors here. I really, you brought it up, so I'm going to say how I feel about that. I want to say this. It's not the fact that I am against the business per se. What I'm saying is, it was zoned. Now, the council brings up a point about businesses moving and knowing that this was available. Folks, we have not had a proposal like this come before us, and I'm about to say, at least over 10 years, if not maybe more. So, it's not something that comes up on a daily basis. So, those businesses that sign those leases, maybe they knew, maybe they didn't. I'm not going to assume that they did. I'm not going to assume they didn't. But as I said, I just feel the conversations, you know, people called me up. You don't think that there's been some conversations over the years when mom goes up or dad goes up and they fills up gas on Route 1 in front of the Golden Banana? I get it. It's there. But those conversations have come, and they were expressed to me that they were uncomfortable, and they like to try and limit them. I respect that when people talk about that. And it's true. When you go past the other business further down Route 1, I don't, I didn't take a pitch. I didn't know the verbiage. Are they probably within the guidelines? Sure. But is there some suggestive language? Absolutely. Could it lead to some uncomfortable conversations? Absolutely. So, that's what I'm trying to, as I said, limit in regard to this particular location, and that's why I'm not in favor of it. And I'll just close with this. You know, there was a Supreme Court case, and I don't remember it, but I remember the question was, the Supreme Court Justice says, "I don't know if I can define pornography, but when I see it, I know it. And what I know is this is not the proper place for this particular business, right there, surrounded by these businesses that are serving the youth of puberty. And we talk about trying to do the right thing, and you can throw out whatever you want about what I've supported in the past, but I know in my heart, when I put my head on my pillow tonight, that this is not the right place for this business, and that hopefully we could find another spot for them. But that's not my job. That's somebody else's job. But that's why I'm going to ask you, wanting to support me in not approving the special permit tonight." And I think the people of the city will support you as well.
Any other counselors? Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, I just want to address, I understand your commentary to the council, and you're certainly well within your powers as a council president. I just get concerned when you're suggesting how we should vote. We're here to make our decisions based on what we feel. To be clear, I go on record that this business meets the zoning for the adult entertainment. My reason for not supporting it is it does not serve a satisfied, desirable local need. Thank you.
This, Counselor, let me just be perfectly clear. As I stated in the beginning, my comments, my statement was not to have you choose a vote on what I have to say personally. I was, as any other counselor, saying my point of view of how I respect each and every one of you, and I would respect each and every one if they cast a vote opposite of me, or even at an opportunity for you yourself to try to make your point and change my mind. I'm certainly open to that. And I think that's what makes this council good, is that we can listen to our position. And perhaps what we have set in our minds may be different and could change, listening to what someone says. So, please do not take my statement as trying to change your vote or tell you how to vote. Never tell you how to vote.
No. Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't suggesting that. I just got concerned that you were talking about how, what this vote meant. So, I just wanted to clarify my own personal opinion on this, on how I see it. Thank you.
Counsel Sasslaw.
Would you like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
On the special permit application from Gochanty LLC, Scott A. McGregor, Manager, 133 Granby Road, Hadley, Mass., for a special permit seeking to allow for an adult paraphernalia store doing business in Adam and Eve at 212-260 Newbury Street, puberty, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of this puberty zoning ordinance, I make a motion to not approve the special permit based upon the following mitigating factors: The business is surrounded by abutting businesses that serve a large adult population. In addition, I believe that there's no local desirable need for the business. Point of information, do you want me to list the conditions that go with the business? If it does pass, would you like me to read them now? The conditions that are basically in the ordinance, but just to make sure we cover it? Number one, that the types of advertising materials that could be located within the windows or storefront of the building allow no sexually explicit, allude materials to be directly viewable by the public. Two, that there be appropriate signage restricting persons younger than 18 years old from entering the premise. Three, that there be no live entertainment. Four, that the guests of the establishment for book signings or other promotional appearances be fully clothed at all times. So moved.
Hearing the conditions, the petitioner is okay with?
That's fine. And like I said, we don't have any live people that come and sign things.
So, my understanding, you're okay with the petitioners?
Yes.
Council President, and I'm looking for a vote to deny. So, I'm looking for a yes, on the special permit, a vote to deny. I'm looking for a yes vote, to deny.
You heard the motion? Roll call. Counsel Manny Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counsel Sasslaw. On the conditions, did you indicate, as I believe was in the letter of intent, that the merchandise, aside from the clothing, would be in a back room? Isn't that what's on the original application?
That is on the application. I believe it says, the first, it says, that's in the general use information, the first half of the storefront of Newbury Street will contain, so I would, they stated publicly that's what would happen. So, that's a condition that he stated, so...
Right. But could you put that in?
Sure.
Into, you know, to hold them to that?
Absolutely.
Because they're telling us that that's what they're putting forward, so...
No problem.
I'd like that in the conditions of special permit.
In addition...
Please.
Absolutely. Additional condition would be, the first half of the storefront of Newbury Street will contain and display the lingerie, clothes, shoes, boots, et cetera, along with two dressing rooms. And the rare section of the store will contain and display the adult-themed pleasure products in office bathrooms and storage area for inventory.
Petitioner, you have any issues with that?
I'm just confused why you're putting conditions in a motion to deny. I mean, if I'm denied, I'm denied. Who cares what the conditions are?
Counsel Rozenall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counsel Sasslaw. If this was to pass, one other condition that I would like to see is that any materials leaving or bags for any merchandise purchased isn't clear in nature that it is opaque so that any materials won't be viewed by any pedestrians.
Counsel Sasslaw, would you like to...
I'm fine with that. If I task the petitioner...
Petitioner.
Again, we're discussing a motion to deny, but yeah, that's fine, too.
So, for the record, any products purchased will be put in a bag that is, is it opaque? What is the word? Opaque? Not in a clear, visible bag. So moved.
Any other counselors? Any other requests for, whatever, I don't know how you're going to word it now, but... Okay. Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Mitsoulis. Manny Martin.
No.
Rozenall.
No.
Turco.
No.
Melville.
Yes.
Gavell.
Present.
Charis.
No.
Motion to deny carries 6 to 4, 1 voting present.
Thank you. Going to items, what's the next one there? Jimmy?
Reports of committees.
Please, Counsel Manny Martin.
The Human Services Committee met this evening. All members were present, and I lost my, let's see, I lost my cheat sheet. You'll have to forgive me one second. Present were members, chairing myself. In addition, were Counselors Melville, Counselors Mitsoulis, Counselor O'Neill, and Counsel Rozenall, in addition to the remainder of the council. And we had a few items on the agenda, one being the sale, an update on the sale of the Crown and Shield Building. And Kurt Bellevance of Community Development gave us an update that there was an offer made by the Wynn Development Company that was not accepted. And it was, the bid came in under price of the current value, which was determined to be 37 and 1/2 million, would be market rate. And Wynn Development has the right to first refusal. They can match it. And they have been working with the city, with Community Development, in order to see if we could assist with maintaining our affordable units and doing right by the residents that are there. And the affordable, the number of affordable units that we're talking about at Crown and Shield are 235 units. So, that was a report of progress. And a date to remember on this is September 30th, which will be the last date of the Wynn Development to make the decision whether they're going to make a counteroffer or not. So, after September 30th, we will have another Human Services meeting with this subject to get an update from Community Development. But we all were very complimentary of the city, in addition to vice versa of the city to the council, for staying on top of this subject. So, we will meet again after September 30th, and that is a report of progress on that one item. Also, in subcommittee, were the issues of pest control, coyotes, and again, an update on the rat situation in the city. And regarding coyotes, we received some information submitted from the Mass. Wildlife that will be posted on our city's website, and it's kind of information for homeowners with respect to coyote sightings. And we're going to continue to work on that matter and try and get a subject expert in to better advise the city on what to do moving forward. Sharon Cameron, the Director of Health, the Health Department, gave another great overview on where we are with the rat situation. And what was interesting was that the, what do you call it? What do you call it? The company that kills the...
The traps.
Yeah. What is that? The guy that kills them? The company that we use?
Pest Control.
Pest Control, thank you. Pest Control Company that we use indicated that they're finding that the rats are not taking the bait that they're putting out in the traps. And that is concerning because that indicates that they're finding other food source. So, again, we need to focus a lot on educating the public on that matter to cut down on the rat infestation that we do have. And most of the complaints are coming in from citizens of the residents of Ward 1. And also, Sharon Cameron has been working diligently on preparing a new ordinance for the city that is still in draft form, and she's working with eight other North Shore communities to work together to come up with a comprehensive plan on how we can address this collectively with best practices. And her ordinance will also go over fee permitting for rodent control, for any development that might disturb habitats or develop another food source. So, she's been working very hard on that matter, and I, we're lucky to have her working for us in the City of Peabody. She's been doing yeoman's work for us in that regard. So, that is a report of progress on the Human Services portion on pest control. So moved.
Thank you.
And, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the Drug Education and Awareness Committee met, and Sharon Cameron again presented to the council with Sarah Grinnell of the Healthy Peabody Collaborative. And she gave an overview of our situation with respect to drug overdoses in the city and everything that the city has been doing over the past several years to combat, educate, and prevent overdoses and fatalities and drug use in the City of Peabody. And again, they've been doing great work. And what also was revealed at Subcommittee was that the Healthy Peabody Collaborative was devised. It was an initiative that started in 2008 under then-Mayor Michael Bonfanti. And they were successful in getting back-to-back federal grants, five-year grants, to fund this collaborative. And again, they've done such great work, but the 10th year is coming up, and they will not be allowed to reapply for that funding. And that's how the federal funding works, because when you get a federal grant, they only allow it for a certain amount of time because they expect you to do one of two things, and that is to correct the problem that you've been given the money for, or to fund it in your own budget for what you've been doing to address the problem. And 10 years ago, this opioid epidemic was not as it is. It was never forecasted. And it's just, as we all know, it's really out of control. So, we need to do what we can as a city to look at other funding sources so that we can continue to have the Healthy Peabody Collaborative moving forward to protect our residents, our children, and work together towards providing a healthy community. So, that is a report of progress. The Healthy Peabody Collaborative has been working with the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Methadone Clinic, the School Department, and Atlantic Ambulance, and as of late, the Colton Buckley Foundation has also joined them in that effort. So, we have a lot of people working together collaboratively to address this very important issue, and we continue to support them. So, that is a report of progress from the Drug Education and Awareness Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counsel, if I may, as the President said, it was coming up on 10 years of this grant. And I'm not sure, but please help me to understand. Counsel Rozenall, I believe you might have been on the school committee at that time when I was on. As one of the votes that we take in school committee members, that to me was one of the most, again, important votes that we took. Information that was presented to us on the start of this grant, it contained a student survey. And I got to hand it to, again, Ms. Cameron and Mike Bonfanti, then mayor, to get me to understand and go and investigate how important this grant was and what the survey really wasn't as it was presented to us. And Ms. Cameron invited me into her office, and it showed me the survey that was going to be conducted. And that started off this whole funding. And if we didn't go with that, we wouldn't have what we have today and the funding that we had over the last 10 years. So, I have a feeling that Mr. Rozenall can agree with me that how important that vote was way back when, when we really didn't understand so much of how important and how many people this could reach and help. So, I'm actually very proud that I was able to put my thoughts aside and investigate things on my own and come back and report back to the committee on why it was so important that we go with this. Just so noted. Thank you. So, Gavell. So Greville.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee that was held, sitting in on behalf of the committee, was myself as the chair, Councilor Gould, Councilor Manning Martin, Councilor McGinn, and Councilor Turco. All other councilors were also present. The, there were two items on the agenda that were discussed. The first one was for the appropriation of road improvement projects, Chapter Ninety money and the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. A motion was made to transfer funds from the Chapter Ninety projects for FY two thousand and nineteen, which was account number two-five-zero-three-four-seven-five-one in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, and move it to Road Improvement Projects, account number two-five-zero-four-two-one-zero five-eight-one-three-four in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. So moved.
Thank you. Can you have a roll call vote, please?
Councilors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Sasla.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rosengall.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville. Greville.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to nothing, one absent.
The second item on the agenda was the purchase of a gator, small tractor, and a mowing addition to that gator, requiring thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And the, the motion was made to move from the revolving account at Brooksby Farm in amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, which was account number two-six-zero zero 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 three-five-six-zero-three, to capital equipment. And the, the account number there is three-zero-zero-zero-nine-four-two-one-five-eight-five-oh-six-two-zero-one-nine-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-six-six-two-zero in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred. And if they ever, ever need help with cleaning up their chart of accounts, I'd be happy to oblige. So moved.
Heard the motion? Roll call.
Councilors O'Neil.
Yes.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rosengall.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to nothing.
No further items to report.
motions, orders, and resolutions. Councilor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one motion. Would like to request that Department of Public Services install a light on the new telephone pole at the cul-de-sac on Pinewood Road. Thank you.
So moved. Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor O'Neil.
Nothing further, thank you.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven C, communication from his honor of the mayor dated August thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and approve all appointments and reappointments as listed in said communication. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight I and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight L and refer to the matter that was dealt with in item four C this evening. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Councilor Gould.
Motion, Mr. President.
Councilor Sasla.
Yes, and on suspension of rules, motion to receive item eight A.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Under suspension of rules, move to receive item eight H and set up a special permit hearing.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Item eight J, motion to receive and set up a special permit hearing.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
I'd also like to make a motion that the Department of Public Services take a look at twenty-six Dale Street. The sewer seems to be not functioning properly. It's clogged, it's clogged up, the sewer on twenty-six Dale Street.
You're not talking catch basin, you're talking the sewer.
And it's actually, I get a little bit mixed up, I'm a layman. It's with a water, it's not against a curb where it goes down, it actually is a sewer cover. I call, I mean, you call it a sewer, catch basin. Tell me. Call it a catch basin. There's someone familiar with it.
The rainwater goes into?
Yes.
I would call it a catch basin, just so they understand.
Catch basin, oh, thank you, appreciate that.
Heard the, heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Also like to make a motion that Department of Public Services check out the signage at the, at the intersection of, excuse me, Farm Ave in Dearborn Place. I've gotten complaints that you cannot see it on the far side, which would be towards the, towards the Farm Ave side with the Department of Public Services. It is very difficult to see it at nighttime. And then on the Route One side, it was bent and the sign was somewhat falling over. So if they could check both those signs for Dearborn and Farm Ave, please.
Clerk wants a clarification as a street sign.
Street signs, Dearborn and Farm Ave, both, both street signs are on one pole. So the visual, they cannot be seen that properly from, there's difficulty seeing it on the one side, the pole was bent, and on the far side, by Department of Public Services, that side, to see if they could change the pole location and make it more visible from the street. It's set very far back off of the street.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
No further motions.
Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any motions, but I just wanted to make a reminder or an announcement for the Colton Buckley. Five K race will be November eleventh at ten AM this year, so you can sign up online to participate in that race, walk or run. And also what they're adding this year is the night before, on November tenth, they're going to have a pasta dinner, I guess, you know, to carb up. And what's really interesting, and it's really not etched in stone just yet, but there are talks with the Healthy Peabody Collaborative and Sharon Cameron and the Colton Buckley to add an educational piece for knock-and-training there and to be conducted by the Fire Department's knock-and-walk officers and the Atlantic ambulance. So again, more good things are being done through the city, everybody working together. So I just wanted to remind folks of that. And we will be having another Drug Education and Awareness Committee and have the Colton Buckley Foundation come forward again to, before that race. But I just wanted to remind everybody of that. Thank you very much.
Councilor Rosengall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A co-motion with Councilor O'Neil to fix the curbing and patch the street around the catch basin at the corner of Pearlie and Willow Bray. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
And another co-motion with Councilor O'Neil is to patch the street in the general vicinity right on Pearlie.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
No further motions.
Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight G.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few months ago, I had filed a motion to DPW, to DPS, to repair a fence between MacArthur Park and Griffin Road. The residents on Griffin Road no longer have a fence that separates them from the park, and they would like it either repaired or replaced. If, Tim, if you could send a reminder to the DPW that I just would like an update on that.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Mr. President, could move to have the Parks and Forestry trim the trees on Wasselchuck Drive.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, anyone opposed, it's a vote.
Mr. President, move to have Public Services repair the asphalt berms in the section of Lynnfield Street currently ready for paving in the area of TJ's Variety.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
That's all, Mr. President.
Councilor Melville.
No motions tonight, thank you very much.
So Greville.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item seven A and refer it to the Ad-Hoc Committee on the Charter. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
House President, under item seven B, under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item seven B and refer it to the Legal Subcommittee.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
And I'd like to, just for a moment, ask my fellow councilors to make a trip online to www.metronorthymca raffle.org, where they can participate in the Where in the World Raffle that's being connected by the Metro North YMCA. The funding that we raise from this once-a-year event is directly, goes directly to supporting children who cannot afford to attend the YMCA. Basically pays for their attendance at all programs, and it's done very discreetly and very nicely. Last year, we were able to raise one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We're hoping to top that this year. We have thirty restaurants participating in a taste event. We also have silent auction, a live auction, and in purchasing raffle tickets or event tickets, you're eligible to win a trip for two, anywhere in the world, for dinner. And that would include your hotel stay as well as your dinner. So your flight, your hotel stay, and your dinner, up to ten thousand dollars in value. You'll be able to meet with the people who won last year, the Todds, Lydia Todd and her husband, Ms. Sousa, and they will tell you all about their trip to having dinner in Australia, which they thoroughly enjoyed. If you'd like to see a preview of that, you can go on that website and click on the video, and they talk all about it. Again, this is a really cool event. It's a lot of fun. It's being held at the Metro North YMCA, and it's Saturday, September twenty-second. So get your tickets. There's, it's starting to fill up, and I'd really appreciate any help that you guys can give us. Thank you.
Councilor Greville, it's always a great time. Thank you for what you do for that also. And I have a feeling that Councilor McGinn, Councilor Manning Martin and myself will be doing some bidding again like we did last year. So it was a, it was a great time, and I do urge all the councilors who can to attend. Again, Councilor Greville, very generous of you, and thank you very much for supporting the Y as you do. And with that being said, will you take item nine A?
While he's getting that. Mr. President, you want me to work on some of these others? Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight B.
Heard the motion, all in favor, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight C. So moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight D. So moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight F and refer to the matter four E on the agenda. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight K and refer to Finance. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Greville.
Yes, taxi and limousine driver's license. Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order. Marco Alexio, license twenty-six. Ryan Gilbert, license twenty-seven. Michael Mincello, license twenty-eight. Richard DeMule, license twenty-nine. Daniel Saroy, license thirty. James Kozick, license thirty-one. Leanne Ward, license thirty-two. Darrell Flanning, license thirty-three. Evan Burgeal, license forty-four.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Item nine B is Wigan Auditorium. Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order. Peabody Recreation, Parks and Forestry, use of the auditorium November ninth, two thousand and eighteen. So moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order. Portuguese-American Cultural Exchanging for the Use of the Auditorium, November third, two thousand and eighteen.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
And I, Ms. Manning, Councilor Martin, do you want to make, you want to do item ten?
Through you to, to.
Motion and resolutions.
Yeah, to, Tim, don't you handle that, Tim?
I, I think we should just finish up in motions, resolutions. Okay, you mind? Because we're on that now. Okay. With that being said, I'd just like to point out information and congratulate the City Peabody and Ward Four for receiving a wonderful grant of three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars for Emerson Park. Numerous committee members were there at the presentation. It was a wonderful time for us. Just to let people know, I did not photobomb the mayor in the photo. I just was at the wrong angle of the picture being taken. Also would ask the police if they could, on Saturdays and Sundays, as much as they could, to spend some extra attention at Brooksby Farm for the fall days with people coming up and driving maybe a little faster than others and watching out for people crossing the street, if they give just a little bit more attention to that. And with that being said, I have nothing else.
If I may, I forgot to announce, to remind folks, there's two events this weekend. There's a pop-up pub right outside here, Friday night, six to nine. Love to have everyone come to kick off International Festival Weekend. And then the International Festival is Sunday from eleven AM to six PM. So those out there watching would love to have you come down. Thank you, Mr. President.
Item ten A. The clerk, please read the announcement.
Ten A, there's a proposed amendment to the City Council rules. The, the proposed amendment is proposed by Councilor Manning Martin. Move to amend section fourteen of the council rules and add section fourteen B. The City Council will not hear any new agenda items passed eleven PM. If agenda items remain after eleven PM, the City Council may extend the meeting with a majority vote. A special meeting may be scheduled, or items may be deferred until the next meeting. The intent and purpose, and purposes of this rule is to encourage a reasonable hour in which the council business is conducted and to, and to protect against fatigue in discussing and deciding important city issues. Per section twenty-five B of the City Council rules, the matter is referred to the September thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, regular meeting. And the amendment would require a two-thirds vote of the council.
Councilor Manning Martin, would you like to have?
No, I think we, it's pretty self-explanatory, so I'll open it up to the councilors if they have any comments, or we just put it to vote.
Councilor Rosengall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a fantastic motion. It's the same motion that the school committee has that you are well aware of. The only question I have is if something does end up getting pushed off because of time restraints, and it is voted on the council not to exceed rules, should there be wording in there that whatever motions, resolutions, unfinished business be then taken up first at the subsequent meeting? And I only ask that because if a resident has been sitting in our audience from eight o'clock all the way to eleven, it never gets heard. The last thing I would want them to do is the following meeting, sit there through the whole entire timeframe again. So the only recommendation or request I would make is that anything left over from one meeting gets put on first, next agenda.
And that's, well, your point is well taken. I don't know when a City Council president wouldn't do that, but I'd like to leave it open because if there's an emergency, you want to allow the City Council.
open because if there's an emergency, you want to allow the city council president to be able to rearrange the agenda. But I don't know why a city council president wouldn't do that, to be fair and conduct the business. And there will be clocks ticking as well to, I'm sure, on some of these items for constructive review, so you'd want to hear those, those items. And I think that a city council president too would probably reach out to those individuals if they knew they were waiting, if that would have happened at the end of a meeting, to let them know what was going on and to keep in communication with that. Your point is very well taken, but I think we have those bases probably covered with the city council president's discretion.
Counsel Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate Counselor Manning-Martin and her initiative here. My one problem with it, and I hope it's not a stumbling block, if a resident has been sitting here and we come 11 o'clock and the majority decides that we're not going to continue hearing, I don't think it's fair to that person that has sat here since 7:30 and been, you know, seventh or eighth on the special permit agenda. I just don't think it's proper for us to say, well, we're pushing you out to the next two weeks, you have to wait two weeks. I'd love to discuss an alternative to that. I know there's other business that is, happens late at night, but if somebody's waiting, I don't think it's fair to them to push them off.
And if I may, I would think that a majority, probably, you only need a majority for this vote. I would, you'd probably get a unanimous vote to continue if someone was sitting there. I don't see any counselor doing that.
I would hope not. Can we amend it so that if there's a special permit that has not been heard, we will continue until all special permits are heard? Just don't think it's right to, I mean, I know what you're saying, that you don't think it would ever happen. I just would like to safeguard against that. I'm willing to talk about it.
Counsel Melville?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I intend to support this. One thing I've noticed this year, even before I became a member of the council, the coming to meetings is that many of these meetings do go on for quite some time, residents are waiting. I think the fact that this needs to be voted on builds in plenty of opportunity for us to accommodate those folks that are here to speak on something. One thing I would like to point out is that, you know, this, the council continually, will continue a hearing based on the request of the petitioner. And residents might not know that because they come in as late communications. So I think it's really important that we also keep in mind the transparency of this body and give people the opportunity in the public to speak, as much as we, we give the opportunity to the petitioner. So, you know, we had somebody come here tonight to talk about a continued hearing. And, you know, that was late communication. I wasn't aware of it, many of the council weren't aware of it, to tell this person ahead of time. These, sometimes these meetings, depending on the issue, can go quite late. And I think that the fact that it's voted on, we have a council president, there's plenty of discretion that is built into this particular change in council rules. So I'll be supporting it because I think it gives the opportunity for transparency. And frankly, it, for me, it brings in some common sense. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, having lived with this rule at the school committee level, I never found it to be detrimental to anybody. As a matter of fact, it was usually voted to continue, particularly if you had people waiting, you know, appointees or anything of that nature. But I think the better issue to discuss and maybe determine how we're going to deal with it, because I like this particular rule, is, the better issue to discuss is the allowance of subcommittees to run over so that we're not starting on time. And I mean, it's become more and more and more because we're trying to jam two, three subcommittee meetings in a night. And, you know, I know, as you all do, when you chair the subcommittee, you want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. But I think, you know, at some point in time, we have to say, the rule was put in there before about, and it still exists, that, you know, our subcommittee meetings, if they're going, particularly if they're going to be long, should go on an opposite night, you know, an opposite Thursday or Tuesday. And, you know, right now, we're trying to fit everything into one small bucket, so the regular meeting that has five special, you know, special hearings is trying to be stuffed into a night with three, you know, committee meetings, et cetera. And before you know it, there isn't enough time. And I think that's even more unfair for the people who are waiting because, you know, you're not allowed by statute to start the meeting early, you know, so if you schedule for 7:30, you can't start at 7:15. Why is it that it's so easy to start it, you know, really at 8:15 or 8:30? And we've gone that late sometimes with subcommittees. So I just think it's all we're asking in this, and I think the better discussion is really better meeting management from the perspective of how we schedule and how much time we allocate. And maybe those of us that are chairing subcommittees will have to say, look at the clock and say, well, you know, my time is up and we have to continue this subcommittee meeting. I just think it's, you know, if we want to be fair, let's be fair all the way around. And I think that, that might help us, just a suggestion.
Counsel Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Gervell. It was actually what I was going to say, because I remember he said it two weeks ago. Maybe some of these longer subcommittee meetings need to be scheduled on the different nights. And I mean, in all fairness though, Counselor Gervell, like a night like tonight, Counsel Manning likely could have never interrupted the health director and in them and stopped in the middle of their presentation. So there are events where we have to go the extra 20 minutes past for those subcommittee meetings out of respect for the individuals that came here to speak to us. But that being said, we know which ones are going to go long. We know, we know which one presentations will be longer than others and we could likely schedule those on the opposite Thursday or the Tuesday prior, which makes sense. But other than that, since Counsel Gervell already addressed it, through you to the clerk, would we have to re-advertise anything that wasn't completed on, on the agenda? Would it have to be re-advertised and then to be placed with the new agenda two weeks later?
As far as public hearings? No, we wouldn't have to re-advertise. We would probably re-notify the butters of the continued date. But we, we, we wouldn't have to run a new public hearing notice.
Okay. With that, I do think it's a great idea and I'm glad Counselor Manning brought it up. Thank you.
O'Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President. All good points. In terms of the, this amended, proposed amendment, I fully support it. The only thing I guess I'd like to suggest or maybe make a motion is, as it's going to go into the council rules, I think we should strike the last sentence regarding the intent. We're changing the rules, it goes in there, we don't need, none of the other rules of the council have any kind of qualifying reasons or descriptions. But that's just a point I want to throw out. It doesn't, I don't think it needs to be there just for clarity, we don't need it. I understand the intent, we just need the first sentence, and I think that works. But that's just my point. Thanks.
Counsel Gould?
Thank you. I enjoy the discussion and the valid points and I will support it. I just am very cautious of us having someone sit here for three and a half hours and then I know we would be very rational about voting and would more than likely choose to stay, but I want to make sure that we keep the residents in mind. Thank you.
Counsel McGinn, did I see your hand up? Counsel O'Neal?
Sorry, Mr. President, I just didn't know was there, I didn't make a motion to amend, but I just wanted to get, you know, as Counselor Manning-Martin made the proposed wording, is there any opinion or thoughts? I can't, I can't hear.
No, I don't have anything to add. So if you can just call them, you know, whenever everyone's done, we can just put it to a vote.
Okay, I think she's indicating not to amend it or leave it at stand.
Then, Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment to strike the last sentence of the proposed ruling. Strike the sentence, the intent and purpose of this rule is to encourage a reasonable hour in which the council business is conducted and to protect against fatigue and discussing and deciding important city issues. So moved?
You heard the motion, the amendment, roll call.
On the amendment, Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould? Yes? Sasla?
No.
Ms. Loes, Manning-Martin?
No.
Rosagnol?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
No.
Gervell?
No.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries six to four. So the.
Any, any other counselors before I?
No, no, wait a minute, sorry. The motion failed six-four, you need a two-thirds vote. I apologize, the motion fails. So now on the.
On the motion?
No, on the motion.
I just had a, I had something to say. Didn't you want to say something for the motion?
Oh, I was just going to say one thing, that on the council rules, I did not realize until the last week that the council rules are in ordinance form, so this will eventually be an ordinance. So if this passes on a two-thirds vote, we'll advertise it, it'll come back one more time.
I just had one question. When we, if the meeting is ended and the petitioner needs to come back and we have to notify the butters again, would that be a cost on the petitioner again or would that, how would that work?
I would say that would be our cost, I would think. But that would be up to the council. I mean, that's just my thought.
We would have to notify the butters, correct?
Generally, we, we do. I mean, it depends on the, on the application. Generally, we, we would.
And at any time, if it's not knowing if we recessed that meeting or not recessed, moved along, make the petitioner come back, unknowingly, would that, would they fall into a timeframe that they missed the, was it 65, 95 days? I throw that out to Counsel, Counsel.
Constructive review would be ticking when you received it, right, Tim? So it's, it's not relevant if we complete it. It's, it starts to tick off when the clerk receives, receives it. So which would give you more incentive to continue that. That would be more incentive for the council to go beyond 11 o'clock if we were in that position.
Right. And would it be in the best interest that went to, so we don't miss that? I hate for the council to miss it and have it put in jeopardy, that would we have a timestamp on every hearing that comes to us to say, hey? I'm asking the council to, their thoughts too, also the clerk.
All the applications are time stamped anyways, so that's.
What I mean, I'm sorry, Tim, on our agenda?
Yeah.
Would it be dated when that time is clicking? So when we're having the meeting, we see if we're going to go past 11, go to 11 o'clock and we're going to end it, that we understand that, hey, listen, if we knew that two weeks from now, we could fall into a, an issue that this person is out of time, that we have that in front of us. I just, I'm just throwing it all out at you folks, I'm just asking. Counsel Manning-Martin?
Your point is well taken and it's a good question, but it is known at the time of receipt and when it's, Tim receives it, so your clock starts ticking there.
So we, so we rely on the clerk to let us know? Tim, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we always do anyways. And if we know that we're close to the 65 days, we'll read the notice to open the hearing, not take any testimony, but open it so at least we've started the process so we don't run into that constructive approval issue.
I realize, Tim, this doesn't put a lot on you because you're, you're going to be in Tahiti, right, most of the time?
Tahiti? Sure.
Thank you. On the motion.
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould? Sasla?
Yes.
Manning-Martin?
Yes.
Rosagnol?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing.